Welcome to our work session of January sixteenth, 2024. I know we're a week late. I think our regular session was supposed to have been a week ago, but due to good weather, we couldn't do it then. So anyway, and I'm standing in for Chairman Daley. He had an appointment that he couldn't get away from, and I understand that. But with that, Ms. Morrell, do we have any public comments?
We do. Brian Lorge.
Mr. Lorge.
Good afternoon. Before I get to my comments, I know you guys had a very tough week, and thank you for all the efforts. I get to sit home, being retired, and stay home and admire the snow and do that, but I appreciate all the efforts and Mark for taking care. I know it's been a tough week for you. And again, as you know, I'm Brian Lorge. I'm a resident of District One. I was very disturbed with most of the public comments from the last county commission meeting and felt I had to respond. No one is supporting pornography in our libraries, and we all agree about limiting access to age-appropriate materials for our children. Let's be clear, pornography is not the target here. This is an attack on an alternative lifestyle, and is purely driven by hate and prejudice. I've not been to a library board meeting, but I've been told that they are reviewing and updating policies and implementing procedures where necessary to ensure they are current and protect our children. It may not be as quick as some people would like, but they are ensuring a balance between providing adequate controls and protecting people's rights. Libraries should provide materials and information presenting all points of view on current historical issues. Materials should not be prescribed or removed because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval. I'm also very alarmed by the methods being employed in this group. They are using tools from the fascist playbook to include the censorship of books and the targeting of minority groups different from themselves. I believe they are being hypocrites. Their political philosophy believes in smaller government, less regulation, and parental rights and responsibilities, and yet the policies they are advocating for are just the opposite of this. They want to take away the rights from anyone with different views from their own. If they are so concerned about the material their children may be exposed to at the library, they should be directly involved with them when they are at the library and be aware of what material they are accessing. I do agree with one point. The Limestone County Commission should appoint two board members as called for by the library policy. I ask the commission to appoint board members that will represent the entire scope of the Limestone County community and not just one small portion. At the beginning of every county commission meeting, we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Let me remind everyone of this last six words of this pledge, "With liberty and justice for all." Let us make sure that Limestone County remains true to these words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorge. Thank you. Let me remind everybody, and I appreciate it, Ms. Lorge. You did great. We limit three minutes per comment, and Ms. Morrell keeps up with it for us. So if she dings a bell on you, you know, if you can wrap it up, we appreciate it, okay? That way, we let everybody have the same time. Ms. Morrell, do we have anyone else?
Yes. Jane Davis.
Hello. Jane Davis, and thank you for allowing me to address you. I, too, would like to talk about the issue of monitoring the library, and I only have three points. All the speakers who denounced the library have only spoken in abstractions, abstract generalities. They claim perversions, pornography, and degenerate material are accessible to their children in the library. So I want them to identify these specific books they're referring to and where they are located in the library. Second, the parents are responsible for monitoring their children's reading. Adults select what's appropriate and what they feel is age-appropriate for their children. You determine what is suitable. Accompany your child to the library. Look at the books he checks out. Make your decision. The third one is to look at the Bible. Christians are urged to study the Bible. We encourage our children to read the Bible, but control what parts are age-appropriate. We avoid having them read in Genesis and Judges, where the fathers offer their daughters for gang rape; lamentations, where the mothers boil their children and feed them to the hungry; lot and amnun commit incest. There's also much, many condone murder and adultery. We don't ban the Bible, because when appropriate, we explain to our children the parts they may not understand, just like all books. Who's the ultimate judge of another's reading choice? Censorship is the child of fear and the father of ignorance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Thank you. Ms. Morrell?
Judy Wilson.
Ms. Wilson.
Hello. I'm a resident of District Four. I will be brief, because I have trouble speaking. I have raised three children with the help of the libraries, and I allow them to not always agree with me. And I'm proud to say, one of them is a public official, like yourself, in his town in Georgia. I allowed them to form their own opinions and make their own judgments with my guidance, and I can say they do not always agree with me, even today.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to say to Ladon, thank you, that the garbage truck was picking up as I left the house. So District Four is in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Anyone else?
Yes, I have some comments that were emailed in, and so I will read those at this time.
Okay.
The comments are from Janet Hunt.
Is this Ms. Hunt?
Yes, I'm sorry I'm late. I was just teaching a class.
No problem. Do you want to email?
I was just going to read it. So if you would like to read it, you're welcome to go ahead.
Anyway, my name's Janet. I was going to say, thank you for the opportunity for letting me speak to you. I'm a resident of Athens for 17 years, and I currently serve as a pole worker at the Athens Rec Center. I've done this for four or five years, I think more, but I can't go back that far. I've served at least three or four years as president of Limestone County Master Gardeners and have led fitness classes for citizens of our county for at least 15 years. Most importantly, I'm an avid reader. I currently read a local, I lead a local book club and check out and read over 75 books each year from the Athens-Limestone Public Library. I also use the audiobooks and sometimes even the DVDs. Last year, the library started a jigsaw puzzle swap, and I also use that. So I'm really use the library a lot here. And because I'm such a frequent and longtime user of many library services, I feel strongly about supporting our library and their staff. And I feel the overwhelming majority of Limestone residents feel the same way. We are extremely grateful to have such a nice library in our community. Sorry, I rushed here. I have attended three of the last three library board meetings, though I did have to leave early a couple of times due to work or class. And I viewed the videotape of the book banners who spoke at your last meeting here, and their shocking testimony is really what compelled me to come here today. Contrary to their accusations and lies regarding the behavior of the board director of the library, I have witnessed Chris Anderson run every meeting professionally. He has allowed every speaker who wanted to speak without interruption. He was never rude and was far more tolerant of the book banner accusations and demands than anyone I could imagine. So I wanted to point that out. When the book banners said that the community was demanding library policy changes, I can tell you the opposite is true. I haven't heard that from anybody that I know that uses the library. The majority of the community at large and the majority of people in attendance at the board meetings do not want a group of library visitors dictating which books are and are not appropriate for other people to access and read. The community also wants the library board to take their time and be very careful about any policy changes which might make it easier for anyone who whimsically decide what books the library can have and what books an adult should read or allow their children to read. While I've read hundreds of books in the library or from the library, there are thousands that I have selected not to read, and that is my choice and the choice of every adult visiting the library. Government officials who threaten libraries with policy changes and funding are not only overreaching, but they are violating my constitutional rights.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
No further comments?
No further comments. We appreciate all the comments made and appreciate you coming up, weathering a storm like you have to get here. With that, we'll go through our work session. Everything will be taken into consideration. We take it to heart. With that, we'll carry on our work session to take care of our business. First will be the minutes of January 2nd, 2024. Does anybody have any comment or any issue with it? If not, then we'll go to the next. We'll take care of our claims, pay our bills of $1,538,605.25. Does anybody have any comment, anything about that? If not, we'll go to the next. No conflicts of interest, no public hearings. Resolutions and orders. We have a resolution to approve supporting libraries and parental rights. Drew, would you mind explaining this to us, if you don't mind?
Certainly, Commissioner. There's a resolution before the commission today, and essentially it says this. First, it recognizes that Governor K. Ivey sent a letter on October 4th, 2023, to Alabama Public Library Service. Therein, the governor had certain proposals for improving the Alabama library system. Now, this resolution would support the governor's suggestions that local libraries, quote, "adopt their own policies governing location and promotion of content that they deem inappropriate for children." Further, the commission would strongly suggest that the Athens-Limestone Public Library Board adopt new policies in a public meeting which would facilitate greater parental supervision for their children, including the following: addressing the physical location and/or relocation of materials inappropriate for youth; number two, requiring that advanced approval be obtained from the Athens-Limestone Public Library Board of Trustees by library staff for materials recommended, displayed, or otherwise actively promoted by library staff; three, clarifying that actions by the Athens-Limestone Public Library to limit children's access to inappropriate material is not impermissible censorship; and four, policies which allow the library staff to address parental concerns about sexually explicit or otherwise inappropriate materials. All of these mirror the governor's letter to the Alabama library system. And finally, this resolution would strongly encourage the Athens-Limestone Public Library Board to adhere to all of its written policies, including, but not limited to, policies concerning board member terms. That's the bulk of the resolution, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you, Drew. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the resolution? If not, we'll put it on the agenda for, to be voted on. Is that right, Drew?
That's correct.
All right. If no comment about the resolution, we'll go to the next one. Contracts, agreements, MOUs, and grants. We're to, will be to approve amended license agreement with Family Life Center for use of the common areas of 503 South Jefferson Street. That's the Community Corrections Building. Is that right? And amend, amendment allows both the licenser and the licensee to have the rights to terminate the agreement without cause upon giving 30 days' written notice to the licenser or licensee. That property is on, where is that at, Mark?
This building is in with the Council on Aging and Community Corrections. There's just a common area there that is available for this kind of class.
Yeah, right across from the old Athens Utilities Building. Does anybody have any comment or anything on this? If not, we'll have our own agenda then. Next will be no budget revisions, no emergency purchases, no board appointments, no award of bids or quotes, personnel policies and staffing actions. Number one would be to hire Frank Stumbo. Is that how you pronounce that? Stumbo?
Stumbo.
S.T.U.N.B.O. As a correction officer, effective January 16th, 2024, pending a drug screening. Next would be to approve, to hire Damian Washington as a correction officer. And if it's okay with y'all, we'll combine all of these first four. Yeah, the first four are all correction officers, right?
That's right.
But approve to hire Damian Washington as a corrections officer, effective January 16th, 2024, pending a drug screening. Approve to hire Seth Fries as a corrections officer, effective January 16th, 2024, pending drug screening. And to approve to hire Kevin Cantrell as corrections officer, effective January 16th, pending drug screening. Anyone have any issue with those four and to combine them for one vote?
Okay.
All right. Next would be to approve to hire Dan Kevin Craig as a facilities technician, pending a drug screening. Anybody have any issue with that? All right. Next would be to approve to promote Tyler McBay from Equipment Operator Two to Equipment Operator Three in District Three, effective January 16th, 2024. Anyone with that? With that, I'll take a note? No. Next would be to hire Heidi Spinnett as Director at Council on Aging, pending a drug screening. The start date to be determined. Anyone have an issue with that? If not, that'll be our personnel to deal with. Next, on our merit increases, you've all got a list of the merit increases. Who's on them? Anyone have an issue with that? If not, we'll go to the next one.
Oh, y'all quiet.
Our engineers report. Mr. Massey?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. We've got two subdivisions for your consideration today. Town Mill Phase Two, this is a major for final approval, creating 77 lots in District Two. It's located on Morseville Road. And then Alabama Highway 99 subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District Four. And so those are the ones that we have for your consideration today. Any questions about those? If not, I have just a couple of things. One, just to kind of give everybody an update. I know last week, we weren't able to pick up solid waste. We are running our schedule, at least, as normal. There are some roads that we can't get to because they're still frozen. We're just asking everybody to, if we can't get to it, just leave it out. If there's ice on the roads, then just be prepared that we're not going to get there, but leave it out. We will get it by the end of the week. So if we have to come back and get it on a different day, or if we have to work Friday, whatever, we're going to get all of it taken care of this week. I know we expect some more good weather that will break this up as the week goes, so we should get a higher and higher percentage of our collections complete as we go through the week. But we will get everything taken care of. I want to thank all of y'all in the districts, too, because I know y'all volunteered, your personnel were available to help, because we do know there's probably some extra and overflow from not picking up last week. Derek, your guys have already been out there, and I think you've been out there, and I appreciate y'all assisting solid waste to get that taken care of. This is truly a team effort to get it done, and I know that's one of the non-glamorous parts of the job, but I really am grateful that y'all were willing to assist and get it taken care of. I know the citizens are as well. And then I was going to run, kind of give you guys an update. I know we've, just kind of behind the scenes, I've been trying to update you individually, but as a commission, I wanted to bring to your attention in the public about our floodplain development ordinance that is out there. I think we have made all of the revisions that FEMA is going to allow us to make. It's, so we were able to ultimately take the language out that leaned towards the idea of building permit, which was one of the biggest concerns, and do it as a floodplain development permit. And then we would be issuing certificates of compliance if they meet all of the requirements within the flood zone. So it would kind of adjust some of that. That took a kind of statewide county engineers association approach to try to work on that, to get that taken care of. So there's a lot of people that have been involved in that. But that was one of the biggest things. Now, I do want the public to know and you guys to know, there will still be a requirement based off of this FEMA document that any construction or development within the county will have to come and be reviewed to determine whether or not it's in a flood zone. But it will be just a review of that. So any, I know that's not what people want to hear. They don't want to have to come to the county just because they want to build something on their property. But that's something FEMA is making us do, and we will be audited for that. Because if we don't comply with that, then there will be no flood insurance available to any resident of the county. So that is something that we are going to have to do, so we will have to put that in place. So...
If I may add to that, too, there's been also a statement, I can't find it in the federal regulations, but there's also been discussions that if the county did not pass these, that the county would not be eligible to receive federal disaster assistance should the need arise.
So it's been a difficult path, because I know that a lot of times, things that come from Washington are not always, do not always line up with what people, especially in rural areas, that they want. So we have been able to kind of amend and kind of maybe bridge the gap between what was originally presented and where we are today. So like I said, I just wanted to kind of give y'all information on that, give y'all a chance to ask me any questions. I know this has not been on y'all's radar for the last couple of weeks, just because of what's going on out there with the ICE, but we do have to, we don't, what we did find out, too, is we don't have to have this approved. We were originally told February 5th, we had to have it approved and in place. But we don't have to have it approved. We just have to submit the document that is going to be approved to the ADECA, the Office of Water Resources at ADECA. We have to submit that to them February the 5th. So I pretty well have that document complete with everything that we're going to be allowed to adjust. So I can submit that, and then we can put it on a commission meeting agenda soon after. But we've been kind of rushing around. I've kind of been feeling the pressure a little bit, but they did clarify that, that it doesn't have to be approved then, but we do have to submit them the document that is going to be voted on. So...
Mark, this is not just Limestone County. This is statewide.
Correct. Yeah, every county in the state, every municipality that is in the state or in the National Flood Insurance Program, every municipality that's in it is having to do an update. And so January of 2023, I was able to find where FEMA put out a document requesting some public comment on a lot of these changes. I mean, unless you scour those national registers, I mean, you're not going to find those a lot of times. But they made the changes to the Code of Federal Regulations, CFR. They made that changes in 2023, so now we're having to come into compliance with it. So like I said, so those changes do include the biggest change that people will notice will be that prior to getting, prior to coming to the, prior to beginning construction, they'd have to submit to the county commission. We just have to review it on the level of, is it in a floodplain? Is it not? If it's not in a floodplain, we issue them a certificate of compliance. If it is in a floodplain, then there's a list of requirements, further inspections that have to be done to review those if it is in a floodplain. So, but those inspections, if it is in a floodplain, those are things that are supposed to be being done anyway under the old regulation. But this is just, apparently, there's been a lot of issues where those inspections weren't getting done because nobody was notified the construction was happening. So they've tried to close that loophole, is essentially what they've done.
Okay. Well, this, I know it's federal government kind of forcing it on us, but let's kind of eliminate some of the homes being built in duck ponds and stopping up tail ditches, stuff like that.
Yeah. If it's in a flood, if it is in a flood zone, then there will be precautions that they will have to take based off of the National Flood Insurance Program. If it is not a regulated flood zone, then without, and there's a lot of those places, like you talked about, just the shallow, just low bowls, where water's just going to stand for weeks. I mean, those are not considered regulated flood zones. And so if it's not an irregularly flood zone, then they would just be issued a letter of compliance that says they're not in a flood zone. I mean, beyond that, what they, how they choose to build would still be their private decision.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not building inspection and those kinds of things to try to, to where there's multiple phases of a permit. It would be a minor permit, minor application. Yes, sir.
Because there are penalties if they don't comply?
There are penalties if they don't comply, and those are, we have the minimum penalty allowed in there based off of the Code of Federal Regulations. So, and the Code of Federal Regulations really just dictates whether or not we're in compliance. And if we don't put these minimums in place, then we're not in compliance, which means that flood insurance would not be available to any resident of the county.
I guess my question was, if somebody wanted to build something and didn't want to get flood insurance on it, I've heard there's one individual that is doing that.
There, yes. If they wanted to build in a flood zone and didn't, now whether or not they have flood insurance is not, that's not whether or not it's compliance. But there are some other things as far as minimum finished floor elevations and like their mechanical equipment being elevated above the flood zone, those kinds of things, they would still have to comply with when they build, whether or not they choose to have flood insurance or not.
Okay.
But yeah, there are some...
So it's not a limit, Tim? They can do what they want still?
Yeah, they're not required to have flood insurance. There's not, there's not a, anything to where, compliance is not reliant on them accepting flood insurance. Compliance is reliant on meeting the National Flood Insurance Program as far as the way they go about building. So through the process, if it is in a flood zone, then we would work with them to determine a minimum finished floor, those kinds of things, before they ever begin construction. And then when they kind of set that floor joist, we would check it and verify that elevation is there. And then at that point, they could get, they would get their certificate of compliance. So whether or not they have flood insurance, so it's not, it's not a requirement for anybody to purchase flood insurance.
Well, that's Scott Warren. I know he's building it, and he's not. It's in a flood zone. I mean...
Just a point of clarification, they would still be required to adhere to the regulations passed, whether they got... Whether they got flood insurance, whether they didn't, these would be what the, what they would have to go by and then also what, what would govern us and actions related to that construction in flood, in floodplain areas. So.
Okay. All right. Any more questions?
I'm sorry, Mark. No, I was just gonna say, I'll try to get these finished up. I know it's like forty-something pages and it started, it's well over, almost seventy pages, I think it was, but, and we whittled it down to forty-something pages. So I will finish it up, make the revisions that we, because we, we got our final list of revisions we were allowed to make last week, so I will get those made and I will send them all out to you for review. But I mean, I know, I mean, the biggest thing that I think anybody was concerned about was that, especially the language that, I mean, it, it was dictating building inspection. I mean, that's, that's the language that was in there. And so, but that, that has been, that has been clarified, we'll just, and revised.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Good deal. Any questions?
No.
All right. All right, then, thank you, Mark. We'll go to other business, discussion of election of board members. What Ellen, you on it?
The chairman had actually requested that I put this on here. It's because we still have vacancies on the DHR board and also the mental health board. I believe there are two positions on each board.
All right, can we appoint members on, for this? This, I meant now, is there slots open?
Well, I think we've got, what, three names on the board?
Yes.
Three members on the board?
There's three names on the board for consideration.
Oh, oh, for?
Yeah.
Okay, well, is that what, what we need to do, to take those three names and, I meant, do we need to appoint on the?
I think what he was wanting to do, let's, let's just discuss it to see if we wanted to move forward with this, with those three names or what we wanted to do.
Oh, is that what he wanted? I'm sorry, I didn't, I was pressed for time today and didn't get with him.
I unfortunately did not write those names down, but I believe.
I don't think he had it, wanted it on there today, I don't think.
Okay.
I don't think he did.
I think it was for a vote.
I know, but I don't have the names to discuss them.
Okay.
I believe it suggested one, Commissioner Gatlin and Commissioner Townsend.
All right, do we want to take this off of the agenda or do we want to go ahead?
This is not on the actual agenda, this was just for y'all to discuss.
This is our discussion, okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
What you got?
I'm good with this.
You got three?
I'm good with moving forward with it.
And, and you know, we may develop a list of citizens who would be willing to serve on boards, library board, whatever, and, and at least would have somewhere to go, because that can be a problem.
Oh, yes.
Give somebody to serve.
Yeah, it is, and we appreciate everybody that serves on our boards, we just, it's a hard job, you know, it's, it's, nobody gets anything for it, I don't think. We appreciate everybody that does serve, but it'd be good if, if anybody wants to be on one of the boards to come, come to us and let us know and we'll, we'll make up a list and.
I think Drew and I, after the last meeting, we had, one of the comments that was made was talking about board members, one of the public comments. Drew and I did discuss trying to, some options about maybe where people that are interested, there could be a general application on the website, a list of the board slots that the county commission is for, just something to kind of let people know in the public. These are the board spots and then they could have a general application that kind of gives, gives y'all an opportunity to see their background on how they could, where they might could best fit some of those locations, some of those boards, spots. So Drew and I did kind of discuss that after the last meeting, so I don't know if that'd be something y'all would be interested in, but.
Oh, yeah, it's always good to have somebody willing to serve. And if they let us know ahead of time, it, it really, really help us out. Okay, anything else on this? That's it? All right, we'll go to the next, to approve to remove the following from the inventory. Archives Department has a Dell Latitude E6510 laptop. They want to take off their inventory, so anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
That, I guess that, that winds us up on our exec, on our, no executive session. That'll set our agenda for the day. We'll take a fifteen-minute break and I appreciate everybody coming out. Thank you. Be back in fifteen minutes.